I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Will you please join me in a moment of silent prayer or reflection? Thank you. Join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Oops, forgot to call again. Do you recall these names? Pat Rooney?
Here.
Ellen Moore?
Here.
John Maston?
Here.
Kathy Cox?
Here.
Nicole Cohen?
Here.
Do I have a motion to review and accept the agenda?
So, okay.
Ellen Moore?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Action item 3.1, approval of the annual financial report 2016-17. Mr. Murray?
Madam President, members of the Board, it is recommended the Governing Board approve the annual financial report for the fiscal year 2016-17. The report is being prepared in compliance with ARS 15-904. After approval by the Governing Board, the annual financial report will be submitted electronically to the Arizona Department of Education. A link to the summary will be available on the school district website, and copies of the annual financial report have been provided to the Board and to us.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve.
Do you want to do your presentation during the discussion?
I will do it. So, the annual financial report for 1617, as was stated, I did some screenshots throughout so you can see the nine pages in front of you, but it's also projected on the screen for those who don't have it in front of them. On page one, main highlights that I want to point out for page one in the short amount of time that we do have, you'll draw, I want to draw your attention up to the top where we're looking at adjacent ways and debt service. These are two areas in which we've been really focusing on as far as, it was noted with the Board that we did not have a truth and taxation statement this fiscal year, and I want to draw your attention to that, adjacent ways column, or the third column, so that both the Board as well as any who view this will be able to see exactly why that did not occur. So if you look down at the very bottom, the ending fund balance at the very bottom, that bottom corner there, we'll talk, we'll look at the two, the third and fourth column. If you look at the third column, you'll see that for that 1617 school year, there was a tax for adjacent ways in the amount of $750,000. And you'll note the expenditures in that 1617 school year of $103,649. That was a result of some asphalt projects at a couple of schools during the breaks over the last school year. So that leaves down at the very bottom with a balance of $653,641. So it was determined at that time, with some conversations as well, that we would not go out for an additional tax for adjacent ways, because this year what our plan is, is to actually come to the Board later on in the school year with a more comprehensive plan as to what these projects, what we'll actually spend adjacent ways dollars for in the coming years. So we want to actually have a plan with a budget to come to you and propose these expenditures ahead of time with a estimate projection date of start and finish, so that way we can, we can look at the remaining $650,000 that we have and show the expenditures accordingly. And then, once we come into another school year down the road, whether that's next school year or the school year after that, if it, if it is deemed that we need to go at and go out for an additional levy for adjacent ways, we want to have a plan to present to you and the public to show what we're actually trying to accomplish with those dollars. So that's why we've been very specific, there is a, there is an authorized transfer in which we could actually take those dollars and move them to MNO. And I believe that in discussions with others, that if we taxed for adjacent ways purposes, then that money is there and visible, and there is a, an ending fund balance, as you can clearly see, of available adjacent ways dollars, and we will come to the Board with a plan in the future on how we're going to expend that money and how we're going to tax if need be in the future. So that's why you see that balance, and that's a great idea. The fourth column over is our debt service column. That clearly will show now that we have at the very bottom an ending fund balance of zero. And that's as a result of what went to the public as far as by, by your vote or previous Board, I should say, of actually giving back the old bond funds that were left over and remaining back to the public by way of actually transferring that to MNO, which then reduces our liabilities and need for taxation. And actually, you saw in the tax levy document several months back where we actually did account for that in the levy rate, and we actually reduced the rate by .10, and there's some other numbers behind that. So that actually, we actually reduced, even though it was in a small way, we reduced that based on transferring that money over to MNO and offsetting that expenditure cost of the taxpayer.
Didn't we also, at the same time, raise the bond rate for this first year just a little bit to accelerate that payoff?
That is correct. Yeah, the Board did make that recommendation.
So the two rates offset each other, so it's kind of a wash?
Correct. That is correct. So that's page one, and you'll notice there at the very bottom, as it kind of pops out at you there, it was, that's the two, those are the two items on which we just discussed, the ending fund balances. So if we go, before we actually go into page two, this is a segue into page two, you'll recall back in May, we had our budget revision for last fiscal year in May, and this is a report from the Arizona Department of Ed, where it actually shows our budgeted revision proposals to the state. And you can see that each of those columns match up perfectly, so what we, what we calculated and what we submitted to the ADE, the ADE came back, you can see there, there's no differences in that, in that last column, so dollar for dollar, our revision was, was right on, was there in exact, and ADE took that and had no discrepancy with that at all. So if you go into page two, you can see there, on page two, down at the very bottom of that page in the budget column, that $28 million matches what we just saw on that previous slide from ADE. So now, as you look at page two, this is where we're probably, I'm anticipating just spending a few moments on, because when this populated, if you look at the far right column, that will allow us and everyone who views this an opportunity to see just exactly what happened from one year to the other. So in that final column there, that last column, if you look on line four, there is a negative 63.8% when it comes to the 2,300 account of general administration. So trying to get ahead of that, actually, I skipped ahead, on, on the PowerPoint at the very top, line one, you'll see that MNO or that function, I'm sorry, program 100, function 1,000 actually grew by 14.8%. So what I'm getting at is there's a reason behind that, and I have some information to show where the growth occurred and where we actually went backwards as far as a negative percentage. And that's shown here on this slide, it's basically page two, and I took just the benefits column of 1617, and then I cut and pasted the benefits column for 1516, so you put them side by side to see the difference. And you can see there's, there is quite a bit of a difference there on that top line, and then again, that general administration line. And what I found was that in 1516, the, you'll recall that we started to increase coverage, or actually, I should say, we increased the premium contribution that the district was going to provide to dependents. So in 1516, if you look at that far right column in the 2,300 category, we have a dollar amount of 800 and, let's see, there here, 807,45. See, 800 and some thousand dollars. And then compared to this AFR that we're talking about now, we're only in the $142,000 range. So right there, there's your big discrepancy between one year to the other. The reason behind that, in 1516, there was a contribution made at the end of the year, kind of a prepayment, if you will, going into 1617, of $863,000 to the EBT. So there's, there's your big gap. So from one year to the other, these funds were, were taken out of, the monies were taken out of that 2,300 account or function, and that's why you see that difference. In 1617, that money was not taken out of there, it was actually placed in the 101,000 function when it was originally budgeted. That's why you see an inflation there, and then that money was taken out.
So, so basically, it's a coding error?
No, it's not a coding error, it's, it's actually coded correctly, it's just, it's just, when, at that time, they decided to, to take it out of, they decided to budget the money there in central services, or in general administration, I should say, and then they actually pulled it out of there and paid the EBT. In 1617, when it was originally budgeted, they put a large, a large percentage of the money into 1,000, into that general instruction account at the very top, as well as trickled some of it down into those 2,000 categories. But you'll recall that, I think it was in February, that, that we made a contribution of $1,660,000. So that was in the 1617 year that you're seeing there. Plus, at the end of this school year, we prepaid the $450,000 that we discussed and already voted on as that one time in the compensation package. So we actually paid that out in 1617, at the end of the year in June, to prepay it going into 1718. And the reason why that view of philosophy happens at times is when, when you're looking at your, at your books and your expenditures, if you are looking at a healthy carry forward, sometimes the decision is made at that point to just go ahead and take some of that carry forward and go ahead and prepay it into, into your EBT account, is what's happened over the last several years. So that's why you see the difference there between the 1516 and the 1617. It's just a matter of taking it from, from that one account, paying it out of that one account versus, versus the other. But there's no, no coding error, it's just, it's just where the, where it was actually budgeted. You'll recall earlier too this year that during the annual, during the actual adopted budget, I mentioned that we placed money, a good sized amount of money into the Governing Board area, so that way we knew where it was and it was identifiable, and it's a little bit harder to, to spend when it's got the Governing Board's name attached to it. So it's, it's really no difference. So next year, when we're here again, you'll probably see some, just some difference there. The money is, is there, it's just where it's actually placed and held. So I just wanted to point that out when you see those negative fluctuations or those positive fluctuations as to why that occurred. Looking at the next page going into, actually, the next page is the classroom site funds. This page is way too big to actually put it on the slide, because if I did that, nobody would ever see it. It's just, there's just too much information on here. If anyone has questions about classroom site funds, I know I've had conversations in the past with some of you individually, but how, how we work this and working with Kelly in the accounting department, we look at every single month as we receive money from the state, we have a spreadsheet that will actually, will account for that. And then, as long as we have that money sitting in the bank with a treasure, then we will go ahead and use that money and disperse it to, to our employees who qualify for classroom site funds. If the money's not there, for example, in June, we, we paid out the big 301 payment that happens in the summertime with all three funds. The June payment had not yet arrived in time for us to actually process payroll and get checks into our teachers' hands. So what happens is, is June's will actually, it's still deposited, it's still there, we use that as a carry forward, and that'll be included in the November payout that's coming up. So that's why you typically will see some type of an ending fund balance, because we weren't able to just go ahead and, and use all of those dollars, because they arrived later than our payroll would allow. And they are carried forward, they are, they are dispersed the very next time that we distributed the 301 dollars.
Okay. And classroom site is 301?
Correct. Oh, yeah. Fund, Fund 1112 of 15. Now, Fund 12 is only distributed one time a year in the summer. That is correct. So now going to this page, page 4 of mine, this is the capital expenditures. I did notice on here, and I circled up on the PowerPoint, something that stood out to me, because expenditures are expenditures, and at this point, they, you know, they hit where they hit, and then you kind of look to see if there's any trends. So I, I looked at this dollar amount on line four. Prior year actual was 329,000 that you see, and this year's actual was only 38,611. So to me, that, that produced a little bit of a, not a red flag, but just it caused me to question, why did that happen, what, what occurred? So in, in looking into that, we have, as, as you know, we have lease agreements, rental agreements for our office equipment, our copy machines throughout the district. So in years past, including 1516, those monies were actually pulled out of 610 out of capital. But because it is actually a lease rental and not a lease purchase, we're never going to own it, we're renting it, it's actually an MNO qualified expense. So that's why in 1617, you see that drastic reduction, it's because it's no longer hitting 610 capital, it's actually coming out of MNO. So that's why I circled that, and at least I, I looked into it, I wanted to communicate that, should you have any questions as to why you see that, that definite flip of, of a negative there.
Mike?
Yes?
Can you give me an example of some things that we are leasing?
Well, the bulk of that is, is our actual copy machines. We have, we have roughly 200, and it's around, close to a quarter of a million dollars in rental fees.
No bus, no buses?
No. No, we have, we have, we do have a bus out there that we're purchasing for CTE, but it's not, it's not a rental.
Just a quick question on the copy machines. How often do we review those leases to see if they're the most profitable? Where do you go?
Well, with me being here for just under a year, I can tell you that we are, as they come up, we do examine them, we did have an example that I shared with the Board months and months ago about two machines, I believe it was, that is coming up on, that actually came up on lease, because they were done. We could either return them and lease rent new ones, but this company actually provided us with an opportunity to continue to lease purchase for another couple of years, it actually lowered our payment. And at the end of these, I think it was a three year, two or three year lease, at the end, we'd own it at zero dollars. And then at that point, we could determine whether or not we want to just let them ride for however long they last, or go and return to a new lease.
I'm just asking, because we found out in the last school I was in, that we could go to biz hubs in certain locations and save ourselves a bundle over individual machines, you know what I mean?
Yeah, these, the machines that I'm talking about are those big workhorses that you see, usually there's one or two in a building, high school may have a few extras because of the size. And then within the lease rental, which is nice, is they actually provide for everything basically but paper. So we supply the paper, they come out, they handle all maintenance, all toner, all repairs, everything. So we lease rent, and all we do is put paper in.
When we own those machines, are we facing a significant service charge on them?
We haven't, we haven't gotten to that discussion yet, but I would imagine that there would definitely be a service charge, I don't know how significant it would be, but that deal would not be any longer as far as them coming out for free.
I won't keep you in the weeds.
Don't. I don't feel like I'm in the weeds, it's a good question.
Are those reader leases? In other words, is there a cost per, per page, so it's?
Yeah, I know on the two that we just entered, re-entered into that contract with, there is an actual, you get so many, you can get so many free per month.
Right.
And then after that, there's a, you know, a few cents per, per sheet charge on.
Sure, because it's Xerox, they, they, they wipe those clean when you are done with that?
Actually.
We copy so much sensitive information.
Actually, if there are hard drives in them, our agreement should reflect us keeping it down, so we can just, or, or them supplying it to the district if there's obstruction. If there's a hard drive, yeah. Not all of that. I will make a note of that, and follow up. Going into page five, I didn't place that up on the PowerPoint, this is, this is strictly our federal state projects, where we're looking at basically beginning balance, and then where, where do we go, and where do we end up by way of different grants and federal state projects. And the main thing is, is coming out with an accurate ending balance in actually working with our grants department, making sure that all, all communication and all end reporting is matched up. And I can tell you that over the last weeks and months, especially with Kelly in the room, she's done a fantastic job in touching every number, and we're, we're very confident in our conversations with just different parts of the department, that, that things are accurate and well on, on the right track.
I have a question.
Yes.
Under state projects, I noticed that the actual revenue on line 19 was a little over $33,000. And then the actual expenditure was of $46,000. What's the question?
What is, is?
Oh, the budget, if I'm looking at the, the part on the left, which is the revenue coming in was 33, and we budgeted, we budgeted 46, so we did have something over there, I wasn't reading that correctly. What about line 27? We started with a balance of about 50,000 and had revenue of 150, above 150,000. And then the expenditures, what would other state projects be?
I'd have to go into those funds, because it's actually, you can see there, it's Fund 465 to 499.
Can you just think of something, one thing on top of your head?
Kelly, could you help me out with that? Off the top of my head, this is something that grants touches all the time, I'd have to go back and actually drill down into that, see.
Is it reaching to the classroom?
Again, I'd have to, I don't want to just give you off the cuff question, maybe I need specifics.
Why didn't she say?
No, I have.
Please say.
So I'll look at that. I can give you an example of something.
Cheat sheet code book, where do we get one of those? Well, I, I have a big blank here, and that's a little hard.
You know what, I can, my cheat sheet, you know what it says? Other state brought you. Nice. So that's where the, I can get, I'll get you, I'll get you that information.
Mike, can you explain to me what falls under line item 691? Billing renewal?
Oh, okay, yeah, we're going to go to that one, yes.
Let me just ask you one question at vocational ed. Is this revenue from the state of 33,000, is that, is that all that the state is contributing to our ed program for the year?
Yes, I'll have to get with Marsha Becker to see exactly what her fund, what her balance is.
Well, the state funds that go to the, to CTE through the J-Tech.
I know.
Is different than what you get.
I understand that.
Yes.
But this is so small.
Yeah.
It's part of it.
No.
But J-Tech is much bigger.
Oh, I know.
Correct, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not the actual total amount.
No, I'm, well, we're, okay, but the state used to.
It's not the total statement, or either.
Budget one more.
Well, that's projects, that's not instruction.
Okay.
So because it's projects, it's a targeted set of money sent to CTE for specific projects, and not legal education.
Okay.
But to give you a specific as to what that, what the expenditures actually went to, I can, again, I can supply you with that if you would like without question. If I ran a report for all of these funds, it would be that three-revenue.
No, where's that on my account?
No, I, I won't get that for you, that's not a problem.
I'm just trying to get educated here.
Going into page six.
That's the business review.
On page six, this is a, kind of a, it's a more concise summary of a lot of what you've seen in other pages already. Some of these dollars that you see here are already embedded into the previous slides and different, different workbook pages. This is more of a, kind of a linear, just quick look, and to be able to see funds straight across as to beginning balances and expenditures, revenues and then ending balances. Mr. Ward, to address your question with 691, that's, that's our SFB funds, the School Facilities Board, that's where, that's where those monies are constantly coming in and out. So as, as you see negatives, it's because the School Facilities Board has yet to, or we've yet to post a check in return for the projects that they've already granted, or granted to us. So that's why you see that negative. And over the summer, there's a, as you know, there's typically a lot of things that go on, so June 30th is a cutoff, there's, there's some limbo there between getting more accomplished or getting reimbursed.
I see that there's gifts and donations for capital, that's zero, but is there another fund somewhere in these pages for gifts and donations that, you know, that makes a report on every school board name?
If you go up to 530, there's gifts and donations, just regular gifts and donations.
Oh, okay, I missed them. And are any of these on this page, if you don't spend it by the end of the, by the fiscal year, you lose, lose them, or they all carry over?
Not on this page, it all carries forward.
Okay.
So again, you can see adjacent ways, bond building with our bond funds are on this page. There's just a lot of what was already viewed or viewable on the previous slides or previous workbook pages, more easy to reformat here. On page seven, this is more data-driven for, for the state and other, other agencies who make, kind of take the overall state reports for the health of each district throughout the state, and take information such as this and turn it into a report, almost like a census, I guess, if you will. So this is for, for those types of reports that a state or another agency would compile. You see primary tax rates and assessed valuation, show our bonds. So it's this, the overall, page seven. Page eight gets more into specific, like special ed-type programs, including gifted, which is kind of under that umbrella. You can see at the top, our gifted count based on those qualifying areas of quantitative reasoning, verbal reasoning, non-verbal reasoning, and the totals throughout.
There's no funding for gifted?
We have, there's a small amount, there's the 173,000 that we actually had in expenditures for gifted.
What was the revenue for that? I thought gifted had a zero on the page that I was looking at.
Program 200.
Everything that, if you go back to weighted student counts on like the adopted budget, or even on the revised budgets, you can see that there are, there are certain weights, but that typically is, is not a funded area per se by the state, but it is. but that typically is, is not a funded area per se by the state, but it is under the umbrella of those weighted student counts. So we get additional funds, it's broken out.
But it's not in these pages? It's not showing up in these pages?
No, it would be on the worksheets and the expenditure budget that you approve at the beginning of the year or the revisions it would make during the.
Okay. Well, here it is on page eight where we just, I see, although I, I'd seen something earlier that had a zero right, and so there it is. Okay, go ahead.
So that's page eight. Page nine actually kind of refers back to page six. If you look at page six, where you have that, that kind of line item going down to each fund, each fund is listed there. Page six will actually break it down that if there are, if any of those funds do contribute towards salaries or employee benefits in each of those areas of instruction or support services, it's broken out there in that top table that you see. So for example, O2O with instructional improvement or others, others refer to it as Indian gaming. Even though there's dollars there on page six where it shows a beginning balance and revenues and expenditures and then ending balance, O2O is a fund in which we do pay, pay salaries out of and benefits. So that's why it's kind of packaged together here in that page nine, page nine of nine. It's not broken out to where you can specifically see that O2O pays for X amount of dollars in salaries, it's just locked together.
O2O is Indian gaming?
Correct.
They actually, they have instructional.
People have trouble understanding how it appreciates funding.
And you'll recall too, that we, this budget year for this particular school year, that we did actually pay for, I believe it's two specialized teachers out of the instructional improvement account. And we can, we can use that up to 50% of those funds to pay for salaries and benefits and that the other 50% would go through instructional supports.
Mike, under technology, technology-related hardware and software, less than $5,000, what are we talking about? Site licenses there?
Probably down at the very bottom.
Yeah.
Yes, less than $5,000, we're, we're looking at certain licenses that would be obviously a little bit less expensive, but when we get into big licenses for like our synergy or anything that's, that's more, more grand and district-wide, then we're looking at the over 5,000. But yes, under 5,000 would be license that are deemed as a little bit less expensive. It could be anything from a subscription to a certain educational software that may be web-based.
Do you have any idea how this compares to previous years?
I don't, I can.
I have last year's.
Do you have the last one? And without looking at, sometimes they change this and what was here, what's here now wasn't here in the past and what's here now.
So this year's 40,000 for 6650 supplies. Last year was 63,000. Number two, technology-related hardware and software, last year was 143,000. This year's 212. Subtotal is 206 last year, but last year, number four, technology-related hardware and software was 149,000.
First question, yes.
Bottom left under other items?
Yes.
119,000 for textbooks. What textbooks?
I wish.
What, what is, what is that?
I don't know, that's a good, I'll have to go back and actually.
Are those replacing, replacing currently approved textbooks that?
I'd have to, I'd have to go back.
We have a textbook adoption machine?
No, we didn't. And I doubt it was spent on textbooks. I think there's something else that you can pay for in that fund.
Does that include hard books or does it also include online licenses for textbooks?
I would, I believe that, again, I'd have to double check on that because I don't want to misstate it, but I believe that that isn't, that would be an approved.
I suspect that.
I'm pretty confident that that is true, but I, I can issue an exact answer to that.
Can I ask our curriculum director?
Sure.
What, in what area do we mostly textbooks?
High school English, ninth grade, high school math, high school English is a priority.
What about the kindergarten reading program?
We're doing the inventory on our discovery intensive phonics program for K3 and we're going to see what we're missing because we did purchase that a while back. So we're going to trend it as current as possible.
Anywhere, any other areas other than every area?
Well, actually, I think it's worth mentioning that the discovery phonics is current. It's not, the phonics instruction doesn't change, the materials are updated slightly, but that program is not outdated.
Okay.
Where they're looking at, I'm sorry, Brenda, step in, but in the areas where we're looking at actual texts, probably from grades two forward, the HM series, all of those are.
Okay. High school textbooks are, if always, I mean, for some years, I don't know, has social studies, I don't know if they've got anything bad as a second.
Well, yeah, we know that was the last option.
Oh, yeah. We spent $20,000 on that textbook and I'm sure those high school kids bring those home all the time.
I'd like to see one card from my purse.
And the last page you see here is the summary page, again, pretty similar to a page just a couple before this, where it actually is breaking down everything that you've seen in here, including average daily membership at the top right corner, showing property tax rates as of 16, during the 16, 17 school year. Fund balance column will then roll over into the 17, 18 school year and that's where we'll start in each of those funds that are listed.
What kind of, because that CMNO's got a decent amount of money on it, what kind of opening expenses go against that in the school year?
Well, the, the tax revenue comes in pretty slow in the summertime.
Right.
So with, with that, that's just a, a balance of what was carried forward in the year before and then just previous balances from before that. But we have expenditures of mostly just 85% of our, our expenditures are salaries and benefits, so the majority of it is that.
But it, it shows there on the M&amp;O and the fund balance is just over $5,000.
Correct.
Is that usually high, is that about right?
No. The beginning fund and balance you see there at the, at the beginning of the year before that, at the end of the 15, 16 school years, at the beginning of 16, 17 is 2.2 million. We did have revenues that came in, we did transfer in that 740, that three-quarters of a million dollars from the old debt service into there. We are going to have roughly a million so in carry forward from last year going into this year, a little bit more than that. So all, all of that and then, yeah, all of that, you know, taking that into account, I haven't looked back to see what like a four to five-year trend is.
But this would get us, this would be something that would get us through July, something that would get us.
No, absolutely.
Through, through an initial couple of K cycles as we warm up and up again.
Correct.
I'd like to see a trend line on that as well, maybe back, say, four or five years.
Yeah, Mike, you, we all came together in this little group about the same time. And when you took over, I was talking about mud puddles and the mud puddles that you find as you went through all this. What I'd like to know is, do you see any areas that we should be particularly conservative?
I don't, but again, going through this process, it allows me to, like I mentioned before, to go back and investigate and see why the difference between the previous year and this year. A lot of what I saw as I presented had to do with, in this case here, had to do with one-time additional contributions to our EBT. So that, that explained a lot. So that's, that's something that I typically, that I quite frankly enjoyed about this whole process was the fact that I was able to just compare. And I think moving forward, as long as we continue to do that, then any mud puddle that may be there will definitely be discovered.
Because I think we need to rely on you to tell us if there's a mud puddle sitting out there that we're walking into.
Correct.
If there's something that we may be facing or a problem come June or a problem that may be coming up, because the numbers can all balance, but that doesn't tell you what the underlying dynamics are.
And I think it goes back to looking at our purchase orders and doing those just housekeeping items and doing that on a, on a more regular basis. I know Kelly is, and I are extremely committed and we're now at a point where we feel very confident in all of the information that's coming to us from the county and the state where, where our monthly reconciliations are, are going to be just spot on and there's nothing there that can get past us. So I'm very optimistic in, in moving forward. I did, I didn't point it out today, but in program 400, which is transportation on several pages back, I noticed that there was about a $70,000 difference in supplies. Not a huge, I mean, it didn't, it didn't cause a huge red flag on the other side of a, of a positive or a minus in, in over expending or under expending from years past, but I, it caused me to look and these are questions that I can have with my supervisors as well just to see. I noticed that there were a lot of tire purchases. Well, that, that can happen from one year to the next. You may need a lot of tires this year, but then not need them for another three years. So those are just conversations that I, that I can have as I, as I open up the financials and look at the expenditures and see the detail. And that, that will help me, it'll help me moving forward. So to, to answer your question about mud puddles, I don't see, I don't see a mud puddle that is a lasting mud puddle. If there's a mud puddle, it's just because the circumstances have occurred at that particular time.
And that's, that's a big thing I'm asking is just, you know, if something like that looms on the horizon, keep us well informed so that we don't walk into something blind.
If I may as well, on the carry forward that we have from M&amp;O, one of the areas that we discussed from last year is we went through last year with several unfilled positions. So including electrician, a plumber, and there were studio positions and several teaching positions. There were a lot of those kinds of things that were also contributing factor to the amount of carry forward that we had, that we probably will not see in the future because certainly we have filled those positions this year. That's not all of it, that's a.
It's not a grid.
Sure. It's why I like trend lines. It's why I like trend lines.
Under intergovernmental agreements, the bottom left, is that just the, the water that the city supplies or is, are there other intergovernmental agreements that give us revenue?
The bus.
Of the bus? And is that counted in this 156,000?
The 50,000 that you see at the beginning and then there's the 50,000 budgeted expenditures? I'd have to go back and actually drill down to see what that is, but the city per, per that agreement will give us 50,000 a year for the next.
For the bus bar?
Yes.
And then wat- water is included?
Water, water separated in that, it's not in the, it's an intergovernmental agreement, but there's actually no dollars that change hands.
So what would the 156,000 in revenues be from?
Again, I, I would have to go back and exactly see exactly what, what that is. I, I don't have it right here in front of me.
Any of that, any of the depression that's in the property, any of the SLS?
No, the Cypress project, everything's in the past.
And how we put that in separate.
You do, I guess you remember where it was.
And I was used to pay off the bus bar.
Yes. Does the city pay?
Which is why I was thinking it might be there because it was bus bar.
No. I'll check that, maybe that's, maybe there was, maybe there's any excess funds from that.
But I thought that was going to save, pay for the solar, the solar project so that, because we have an early payoff now, but we're going to be able to pay that off in the next month or time.
Yeah, there was a bank.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you have any questions, this will be posted with approved on the, there'll be a link on the district's website and it'll link to ADE. And of course, you could always call or email myself and I'd be glad to get you detailed information. Again, I, I can find it, it's here, it's there and it's, it's easily accessible. I mean, that's why I was looking into the transportation, for example, it's, it's there and it's explainable, but it's just, it's, it's too much to manage in a setting like this. And I, I, in a conservative approach, I just don't want to put large stacks on paper if I don't have to. But if somebody specifically notices, I will definitely give them a copy for what they need.
I think you'll have it all memorized soon.
Yeah, all those funds, I, I'm on the way there.
Congratulations on matching with ADE. That's pretty amazing.
That is, that's good stuff.
Yeah.
Sounds like a lot of students' nights.
Are there any other questions? Do we have any call for the vote here?
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Helen Moore?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Okay, 3.2, call for public hearing October 17th, 2017. Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the board, it's recommended the governing board call for a public hearing on October 17th, 2017. The governing board is asked to approve a call for a public hearing to be held on October 17th at 6:00 PM to present the allocation of monies related to the intended 1.06% teacher salary increase pursuant to the laws in 2017. The notice will be posted on ADE's website on October 6th and we will, and we'll meet the 10-day requirement between posting and the hearing.
I move that the call for the public hearing.
Senator.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Helen Moore?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have any announcements of our, our school board meeting on October 17th at 6:00 PM. Another motion to adjourn?
So moved.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yeah.
Helen Moore?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.